Okay, good evening. I'd like to welcome you to our February 5th, 2019 meeting. If we can all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a quick couple of housekeeping issues. Exit's noted to the rear, to this side here. Welcome everyone to this meeting, February 5th. First order of business is to approval of the minutes. I need a motion to approve January 3rd's minutes.
I'll make that motion.
I need a second.
I'll second.
Call a question?
Aye.
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 Aye, so Carrie, thank you. I need a motion to accept the minutes from January 15th.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Call a question?
Aye.
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 Aye, so Carrie, thank you. Okay, next order of business, budget transfers. Has everyone had a chance to read the treasurer's budget transfers? Any questions? Good, Dory? Good?
I'm good.
Good. Okay, I need a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Call a question?
Aye.
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 Aye, so Carrie, thank you. Resignation Brendan Plunkett, Crossing Guard, trustee who?
In a memo from Chief Mel Chiori, he requests that we accept the resignation of Crossing Guard Brendan Plunkett. As of January 23rd, 2019, Mr. Plunkett is resigning due to health issues and we wish him a speedy recovery and good health for the rest of the year.
Amen. So...
I put that in the form of a motion.
Second?
I'll second. I'll second.
Carrie, very good. Call a question?
Aye.
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 Aye, so Carrie, thank you. Next order of business, appointment Cameron Gomez and Jordan Tetrault? Tetrault? Yes? Come on up. Am I pronouncing that correctly, by the way? What is it? Oh, I killed that. Absolutely killed it. I'm sorry. But I'm glad you're here. Trustee who?
In a memo from Chief Mel Chiori, he requests that we approve the hire of two part-time dispatchers, Cameron Gomez and Jordan Tetrault. Both candidates are currently employed as part-time dispatchers with the Greenwood Lake Police Department. The department background investigations have been completed. Mr. Gomez has successfully completed the required drug and physical screening. We're awaiting the results on Ms. Tetrault. And their effective date would be February 5th, 2019, at an hourly rate of 1873 per hour. And luckily, your everything from the department that we require has been completed. And I put that in the form of a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Call a question?
Aye.
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 Aye, so Carrie.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you. Okay. Next order of business is actually twofold. We're going through the process of disposing of surplus equipment as part of our purging program, if you will. And the Building Department and the Clerks Department has identified the following. From the Building Department, we have a Dell monitor, CNOMN 008 IBM monitor, 23G 6174, Brother 1270 fax machine, HP LaserJet 1022 printer, Olympia EC 4000 desktop calculator, HP LaserJet SL printer, VM 0029, HP 3180 fax machine, Dell laptop with port, APC UPS backup, 3B 098X 29848, APC UPS backup PB 98344 29803, and a Gateway Solo laptop 0019441234. I need a motion to surplus this equipment?
I'll make the motion.
I need a second.
I'll second.
Call a question?
Aye.
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 Aye, so Carrie, thank you. From the Clerks Department, the following material or equipment has been requested for surplus. HP LaserJet P1505 Hewlett Packard desktop printer, C2037A HP LaserJet 1022, IBM 6789 typewriter, IBM 6789 typewriter, Dell Optiplex 3010 computer and keyboard, Dell Optiplex 3010 computer and keyboard. I need a motion to surplus this?
I'll make that motion.
I need a second.
I'll second.
Call a question?
Aye.
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 Aye, so Carrie, thank you. Last order of business. I had accidentally and innocently omitted an item for your approval, but the Parks Commission has an opening from Amory Morris, which was our last village appointment. She retired and we needed to fill that vacancy and the Parks Commission has identified, and I concurred by meeting, Kael Conklin as a great candidate. I think he's going to be an incredible asset. I can't imagine a better, more qualified individual. So, Kael Conklin, we're going to resolve right now to appoint you to the Parks Commission. And I need a motion to appoint Mr. Conklin.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay. You all didn't have it on your packet, so I apologize. That's on me. Any questions or anything you'd like to ask me about Mr. Conklin? He comes from an incredible background. He's got his undergrad degree in forestry and management in the park system, which I think is going to be a tremendous asset to the commission as a whole. So, we're really excited about that and he knows all about sprinkler systems and all kinds of cool toys and property management. So, we're really excited for him. So, let's call a question?
Yes. Aye.
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 Aye, so Carrie, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, new business. We had been working on this 2019 Village of Monroe special events permit application. You've all had a chance to go through it and I think at this point, we need to get it done. And it's not been done yet and we get, I think right now, we've got probably
Seven.
Seven applications that are sitting pending my approval for submittal to the village. So, I think we need some direction. It was suggested by the clerk and I thought it was a pretty good idea that maybe the easiest way to wrap this up is to involve the Police Department and the Building Department into a workshop, one-time event, page by page, trim it down. I think it's cumbersome. That's the reason I...
I think it's very cumbersome.
So, I think we need to get it clear. The only thing I do agree wholeheartedly on Sergeant Emma Teddy's point is the amount of time that we do not give his department nor the Building Department to go through this process. Some of these events are pretty innocuous. It's simple and we get that. I'm sure they do as well. But some of them are more detailed and the public safety is paramount in everything we do, right? So, we've got to do our due diligence and allow them to do theirs. Having said that, I'd like to know, do we want to just take the existing application and just monitor or modify it to a minimal state right now where we can get these applications to process? With the caveat that they be told, and I spoke with the clerk about it, that they be advised that there'll be a 30-day minimal cooling off period between the application's submittal and the approval. But we need a direction. We've got to get this done. We've got to get this off the books.
Can you explain to me why, if applications have been submitted under the previous application before we've approved anything, why we're not going forward with the applications that are currently?
We may have to.
Okay.
Yeah, we may have to. Now, the only benefit about that is that out of the seven, only one of them is 45 days away, thereabouts. All the rest of them are spring and summer and so, you know, so we're okay there. But nonetheless, you know, I mean, if we have to, we can do it.
It would just seem to me that until we've passed a new policy or permit, that the old one would be in place up until that time.
And that's probably not a bad idea, except that I would like to see this get over.
I understand.
So, maybe we could, do we have a date in mind of when we want to have this workshop?
Listen, I'm a Saturday, 8:00 AM guy. You know, you want to get me at 8:00 on a Thursday? Come on. So, what do you think? I mean, we're going at the budget. We've got budget workshops around the clock for the next two months.
I have another question. What prompted the, you know, completely restructuring of the permit application and what are we trying to achieve?
Okay, so I think the biggest glitch was, I think the biggest glitch was maybe two pieces. Number one, I don't think there was a sufficient amount of time. Would you agree, Sergeant Emma Teddy?
Yeah, there wasn't enough time.
Exactly. So, I think that was a main piece. But it's a simple piece if we just say, "We're going to give you that kind of time." And the applicant has to know that.
Right, right. We're looking at an entire packet of changes.
Exactly, right, exactly. Which I think is a lot of cut and paste, to be frank with you, but whatever. But I do say that the other piece, I think, also has to do with, a lot of times organizations that all have great ideas and just want to participate in this beautiful village, you know, don't have that same idea of timeline as we need to have. So, we get kind of caught up in it and then I show up and say, "Hey, Jim, can you help me out? Hey, Sergeant Emma Teddy, can you help me out? I've got this group that want to come in, including our own Christmas event." I think I gave you a week, right?
Yeah.
You know, and that doesn't work, especially when now Jim has to say, "Well, are you going to have heaters inside or outside? Are you having lights inside or outside? Does anybody have access to the cords?" I mean, it's safety. So, I get it. So, I think, if I'm answering your question, I think that's what really precipitated this. And I think at that point, people will like get into the 20th sense, 21st sense review. All right, whatever. I think the existing application works with some modifications.
With some modifications.
Yeah.
There are things that maybe need to be changed.
So, why don't we do this? Why don't trustee Alley and I get together with the Police Department and the Building Department and the four representatives can come together with some sort of modification to the existing application? And that might help us move things along a bit faster.
Done.
So, you and I will coordinate and then we'll get...
Is there an issue with that?
No, but since I'm the one that's accepting it and processing it, I should be part of that discussion as well.
Including Clerk Baxter. So, the five of us will get together.
Saturday morning, 8:00.
Saturday morning, 8:00 AM, wear your pajamas.
I'm in then.
Okay, next order of business. Some time ago, Frontier came to us and made a presentation. If anybody was here, it was pretty enlightening. Our friend and neighbor and our beloved cameraman, Andy Ferrara tuned her up a bit and advised her about her system. But nonetheless, she did make a presentation and from that, we're here. There were some hiccups along the way with the existing phone equipment here. And the board had advised the company that they would not move forward until they adequately and completely completed all their repairs to this village, which was begging for. I mean, Frontier is just not whatever. So, anyway, fast forward, they've submitted through a series of proposals and everybody's had these reviews and revisions done. Through our council, has finally come up to a completion of a cable agreement. So, that Frontier will now be able to provide services here in the village, which is good for competition, as Mr. Carl had stated in the past. So, we're really happy about that. And, you know, it's good. Competition's good. So, I need someone to make a motion to accept the cable franchise agreement that the Village of Monroe has worked through with the Frontier Communications Firm. And to authorize me to sign that contract as well, yes.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any further questions? Okay, by the way, just an FYI, the full agreement is available online or will be available online on our website for anybody that'd like to review the entire document and the terms under which we've entertained Frontier. Yes? Yeah, no, I just asked, yeah. We just got the, yeah, yeah.
But you have the
Yes. Yes, yeah. There were, but this here, I'm sorry?
On top of the, after the proposal.
We had the red line, I think, and then this came out.
Red line and clean copy came same day.
We'll confirm that before I sign anything. Okay.
Call a question? Call a question?
Yeah, I'm sorry, please.
Aye.
Yeah, aye.
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 Aye, so Carrie, thank you. Okay, next order is the amendment for Local Law 3 of 2019. Yeah, 2019, which is the amendment to chapter 185 for towing. We need to set a public hearing so that we can go about the business of posting and hosting the public hearing. I need a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I need a second. Any questions about that?
You need to state the date and you might want to, I mean, when you want to, just for the board's edification. I'm sure you've seen it's minor change. The acceptance of personal checks has been taken out.
And it's February 19th at 7:00 PM, regular scheduled time. We're not going to do it earlier. We'll make it part of the regularly scheduled timeline. Please. I'm sorry. Three.
It was 6th of 2018, assuming that we pass that it will become Local Law 3 of 19.
Thank you. Okay, and it is, it's that one deletion, which is referring to personal checks. And the board has agreed that that's actually a good thing. Okay, any further questions?
Nope.
Okay. Did you make a motion?
We have a motion.
Okay, call a question?
Aye.
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 Aye, so Carrie, thank you. Next piece is amending Local Law 2 of 2016, which is chapter 43 of the vehicle and traffic. And it refers to the weight restriction along North Main Street. And there's a couple of pieces there that have to be resolved. One is to clarify, in fact, that the 208 North Main entrance, all the way down, becomes Spring Street, continues on to become Spring Street and then continues on and ends at Freeland. And that's not currently identified in the local law. And then the second piece is to request the Police Department to give us some guidance here, which is to say the local deliveries only has been a bit of a confusion. So, I want to clarify that, clean that up. So, those two pieces will be ready for publication tomorrow.
I think you'll need to introduce that at the next meeting. I don't have the language.
Okay.
The specific language. So, as soon as you get that to me, I will modify, you know, I'll draft the local law. Should be pretty straightforward. You can introduce it at the next meeting and set the public hearing at the next meeting for the following meeting. I know, Mr. Mayor, we had discussed it, but I couldn't get it.
No, no, that's on me. No, no, that's fine.
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, Spring Street ends just after King Street. And it goes into the town of Monroe. You have a small stretch of that that's in the town of Monroe. So, it does not connect to Freeland Street.
Okay. I wasn't aware of it. I thought it was at the, at the...
If you're coming out of the village, just past King Street, it goes into the town of Monroe. Townwide, across that section.
Okay.
Yeah, it does.
A lot of times I know when the pavement changes.
So, I guess we'll have to have the Police Department help us with the identification of the street names along that.
Okay. All right, so for the point right now, we're going to table that. And then we're going to bring it up in the next meeting with the correct information denoted. Thank you. Okay, new business. First piece is a request to travel to New York State Building Officials Conference Training for Jim Cox and Debbie Prue. I didn't get, I had hoped to have some information. I know they wanted to have us deal with this tonight. But at the last meeting, the board had advised that we were not going to shut down the Building Department. Am I right on that?
Yes.
So, it's a three-day event and we are committed to not seeing this building shut down. So, the board needs to weigh in as to how they want this to go forward. I did reach out through council. I did. And there is opportunity to go to other training events and so forth. And I think we need to get to, and I just got it tonight, so, you know, there's no way I was going to get to Jim. I don't know why I thought he was going to be here tonight, but anyway, I think we need to...
I agree. I want to say that we learned from the previous meeting that their certification is based on a calendar year. So, seeing as though we are in February of a new calendar year, there's ample time for each member of the Building Department to satisfy these 24 hours of certification.
Right, CU is right.
So...
Is there a way to get a calendar or something that shows us all the different courses offered when they are? So, we can plan ahead or they can...
Right. So, I did go online and that was the information I got this evening, basically stating what opportunities there are. And there's actually one very similar timeline, actually. I'm not quite sure if there's any difference in Poughkeepsie. And then there's in Westchester and then there's further out. But I don't want to negate the opening or closing of the building by sending them up to Lake Placid, you know, for $1,200, you know, which we would have to do if we housed them up there, you know. So, I think locally, I think we just need to have a really frank discussion with the Building Department and say, "Listen, plan your year out in advance, present it to the board, but you plan to attend what you need to attend to get your accreditations in order per calendar year and let the board approve it for the year." You know, I was very clear the last time we met and Jim was here and I said just that. I said, "Given the fact that I think it was, it might have been November. I don't remember." And we only had till the end of December to get it done, that we would allow it to happen that time, that one time. And I thought he acknowledged that.
Well, then I think we need to have a conversation with the Building Department.
Okay.
The fact that this is being hosted in Rockland County and that is, I'm assuming that it's our Building Department that are members of the Rockland NYS BOC. The fact that it's housed in Rockland and that it's for the Rockland New York State BOC, does that mean that they can only go to a Rockland County base?
No.
No, they can go anywhere in New York State. Okay.
I actually was a member of that group for many years because I wanted to know what made these guys tick. And I'd be up in Kingston. I went to Lake Placid for a class. I mean, I, you know. So, there's opportunity throughout the state. It's the New York State Building Officials. So, you know, I'm not saying, "Let's send them to Waterloo," but, you know, maybe we consider Westchester within the scope of, right? And Poughkeepsie and Kingston. There's a Tri Valley, I think it's a Tri Valley or Tri Hudson Valley, something like that. There's another group. They belong to Rockland, which is a consequence to us, but I just think we need to know in advance. There's no reason why we can't.
Is there anything that sets this seminar apart from others?
I don't know. I just know that that is what they chose, which is the in-service. So, there is an in-service calendar on the website for the New York State BOC. And I just think it needs to be, you know, just give us the, you know, the bottom line. I mean, if you have multiple persons, I mean, the town has, how many people, you have what, how many people in the town Building Department?
Two, three.
Eight?
Two inspectors and one secretary.
Okay.
And I will tell you that they did shut it down for us and it was, wasn't good.
Right, and I get that, you know, but my point being is that, you know, if you run into that situation and it's that way throughout the state, there's no reason why you need to shut down a department, you know. There are some times there are markets in this building alone. I don't get that. I mean, I know it's a small building and it's one treasurer, you know, one court person. I get that. But there's no reason to have it shut down, have the building empty. Just no way. So, it's just not good business, period. Okay, so we're going to table it and have a conversation?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. Next item, amendment for the service agreement for the value payment systems. So, currently, we receive payment through a PayPal system and have for many years when we collect water and/or, I believe, tax? Just the water, yeah. So, but the platform actually, when it segregates the two, I think it actually then brings you into the PayPal field. Right. So, anyway, I wanted to get away from that and Catherine agreed and did some research. And she found a vendor to do that, the value payment system. And what that allows us to do is to streamline our process and clearing through the bank and so forth. So, we want to go forward with that. I'm sure everybody's had an opportunity to read through it and understand the process. Does anybody agree or disagree or Carrie?
No.
Like the idea?
As long as it makes it easier for payments coming in. I don't see any opposition.
I think it's got a lot to do with the secondary, the clearing of it. I think that's really what gets cumbersome and the fees and... No, 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 only with the water, right?
Right.
So, okay. I need someone to make a motion that we accept this service agreement.
I'll make the motion.
Which, by the way, has no impact to the rate payer as far as the village is concerned in taxes. It's only based on the fee that they charge for that clearing. Right? So, I'm sorry, did you make a motion?
I did.
Second?
I'll second.
Call a question?
Aye.
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 Aye, so Carrie. Next order of business, O'Toole's here, right here on Stage Road has requested a 30-day waiver request to have an event on March 17th between the hours of 8:00 AM and 10:00 AM with the New York State Liquor Authority, which is required by law that they get this approval from us. So, whereas the Board of Trustees of the Village of Monroe take no exception to the approval of the liquor license and hereby waive its rights to a 30-day hold on the license application for O'Toole Ventures LLC. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees waive its right to require a 30-day hold on the O'Toole Ventures LLC license application. I need a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I need a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Questions? Call a question?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so Carrie, thank you. Next word of business is the payment authorization number two on the Freeman Homes subdivision curb replacement phase two. Resolve the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of Lang and Tully and prove the payment number two submitted by ATech Concrete for the Freeman Homes subdivision curb replacement project phase two in the amount of $4,997.50. Work was completed on this project on September 6th, 2018 and accepted by DPW Supervisor John Lindman on September 24th, 2018. I need a motion to allow me to sign the voucher and make the payment?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Call a question?
Aye.
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 Aye, so Carrie, thank you. Next order of business from the Village Clerk, resolve that the Board of Trustees approve the request of Village Clerk Baxter and Deputy Clerk Zara to sit for the notary public exam for the Rockland County Fire, at the Rockland County Fire Training Center located at 35 Fireman's Memorial Drive in Pomona. This is for the purposes of getting their notary public license. The cost of the exam is $15. The cost of the exam is $15 per person, and the total cost will be $30. Should be allocated from Budget Line A 1410.4720 under the clerk education. Mileage for use of their own vehicle will be reimbursed on a voucher at the rate of 54 cents per mile. Deputy Clerk Zara will sit for the exam on February 26th, and Clerk Baxter will sit for the exam on April 9th. I need a motion that we accept and allow them to travel and take this test.
I will make that motion.
I need a second.
I'll second.
Call a question?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so Carrie, thank you. Okay, Orange County Tourism Grant acceptance for 2018-19. The Village of Monroe was notified in a letter dated January 24, 2019, that the village had been awarded a 2019, 18, 2019 County of Orange Arts and Tourism Grant. The village will be receiving a $2,500 grant to support the Village of Monroe's Founder's Day Celebration. A resolution accepting grant must be adopted, certified, and returned to the county. I need a motion that we accept this.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, and just for knowledge, trustee Ali got this grant done, and I ran it up there for her.
We didn't.
And we got it in there, so it was great, and I appreciate that, thank you. So the motion and the second, call a question?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so Carrie, thank you. Okay, a request to travel, this would be Irene, but she's not here. I guess I'll do it. Okay, resolve the Board of Trustees approve the attendance of Water Plant Assistant Jamie Prince. At the American Water Works Conference from April 16 through the 18, 2019 in Saratoga Springs, New York. The cost of the conference and hotel accommodations at the Saratoga Hilton is $1,007 and will be allocated from Budget Line F 8330.472, purification, education. Ms. Prince will be traveling with her own vehicle and a voucher will be submitted for mileage reimbursement at the rate of 54 cents per mile. I need a motion to accept this.
I'll make the motion.
I need a second.
I'll second.
Call a question?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so Carrie, thank you. Do you have that last piece, trustee Hool?
I do.
Please.
The photo news will be once again publishing their children's newspaper, April 25th of 2019, in honor of the village's quasquicentennial. The Village of Monroe is partnering with North Main Elementary and Pine Tree Elementary Schools, and we are going to host a contest in which we will elect a kid board of trustees, complete with a kid mayor and four kid trustees. We presented this contest to North Main this morning to rave, to an enormous amount of excitement from the children. It was, one boy actually even said, "I'm gonna be mayor."
He did?
Yep, yep. So what we'd like to do, what I'd like to do is I would like to post in the children's newspaper on April 25th, the five winners with their, with their, a picture of their projects and a description of who they are and the position that they've been elected to. And that will be a cost of $540 for one full-page color ad. So I put in the form of a motion, a request to spend $540 on a full-page ad in the children's newspaper.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you.
Any further question?
I have a quick question.
Yes.
So when you present it, how, how do they decide? Is there an election?
There will be an election. We are still developing the election procedure, but essentially, the children at the school and, of course, the board of trustees and the quasquicentennial committee will have an opportunity to take a look at these projects and choose their favorites. Very, very basically, each person will get a set number of votes, and they'll be able to vote for their favorite projects. The project with the highest number of votes will become kid mayor, and the four following projects will become the trustees.
Awesome. Okay.
Well, one of the trustees will be a deputy mayor. I suppose if we did have six, a sixth, we could, but...
Very cool. They were really, really excited, it was really awesome.
Yep.
Okay. So I need a motion?
We have a motion and a second.
Okay, call a question?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so Carrie, thank you.
Thank you.
Last piece of business, it's not on the agenda, and I apologize, but I think you were given a cover sheet, if I'm not mistaken. Okay?
Voice words, yes.
Okay, so better than a week ago, I guess, we had an issue with what was reported as a sewer spillage up at Monbeisha Lake. And that resulted in Supervisor Cardone giving me the heads-up and a resident on Facebook. And anyway, we did all the diligence that we did. I wrote in detail about it on the website. One of the residents asked if there were Cliff Notes, because I guess it was just too long for their taste. But it was very detailed, and I think it explained everything that Supervisor and myself had experienced. But through that event, the DEC has acknowledged the envi, you know, the environment and the situation, gave us a spill number, and they're in the best, they're in the process of investigating it. And I think there's a letter gonna be going out referring to it very shortly. So on the good side of that event, Supervisor Cardone came to me, reached out and said, "How about we look about some ways that we can maybe be proactive here and find ways to either identify some grants and ways to protect our watershed and our water and so forth." I'm like, "Yeah, absolutely." So he's done some homework already on it. We were on a trail with the DEC on another grant opportunity, which I think we're gonna continue forward with, but this is another one that's a great opportunity. This company, Choice Words, is actually a grant writer who specifically works with municipalities and nonprofits and such, and he has proposed to write a grant which I think has an identification amount of $100,000. And what we would get, we don't know. Obviously, grants are, you know, very subjective, but one of the keys to any grant is to have somebody that knows what they're talking about, knows how to write them, knows how to hit the right buttons with the people that review them, and in this case, it would be the DEC. So I've got some really good feeling about it, you know, and I want the board to think about this while we're sitting here talking about it and ask questions, and I'm glad the supervisor's here as well. He's actually already with his board committed to a project for their Round Lake Park, Lake. And so that was, that was good to hear, and we need to get, you know, deal with our Monbeisha Lake, which is our predominant water source. The other grant that I'm looking at is a, basically a clean water grant through DEC. And basically, what happens there is in that particular one, I haven't realized any money or monetizing of it, but they do have a tremendous resource base of information and consultants and so forth that are prepared to come in should we receive their approval, which I think we're really in good shape for, because that's all the information I'm getting from them. Basically, they'll come in, and they'll do a full overview of the lake and the shed area. One of the challenges that I had, never thought about it, you know, because you don't think like this necessarily, is that, you know, we are vulnerable. I mean, from where the spill was to where the water's edge is, is, I'll just say, 100 feet, and I basically could walk right into that and go swimming if I chose to, just like that. And I think that needs to be more restrictive, at the very least. And that's not only there, everybody knows other areas like Sharon's Cove, which is another section of the lake, and there's a lot of points where we're very vulnerable and we have to address. So these folks, that would be the primary goal of that, to address where our Achilles' heel is and where our issues are. So it's a couple of different opportunities here. This one here, it's been estimated will cost us $2,400, yep, from this company. They estimate their work will be about 30 hours with the work at $80 per hour. And the reason I'm only kind of throwing this the way I'm doing it, I just got it, as did Supervisor Cardone just get it. And then more importantly, though, it's got a deadline of February 15th. So does the other one that I'm working on, which we will complete by tomorrow, I think, and submit it. I reached out to our water consultant, Delaware Engineering, and asked them for some oversight on this one now, but definitely the other one as well, just to make sure, again, we're doing the right thing and being as inclusive and as detailed as we need to be, so...
Being in a receipt, being in receipt of a grant like this, you said it's $100,000 max available?
That's right.
Is it, and then below you say there's $25,000 match. Is it a 25% match?
It's a 25%. Yeah, so it's based on 100K. If we got that, we'd have to come in with 25K as a participant. But should we receive, say, a $10,000 grant?
Still 25.
2500.
Is that match, can it be in kind, work done by the...
I'm not sure. I could find out. That's a good question. I got the...
A lot of times, actually, it's in kind. So if your DPW does work, 25% of the grant, 25,000. That's something you might want to find out.
For credit, right? Out, thank you. Sorry? Anything?
I'm good.
I think it's great.
Okay, so what I want to say is this, I'd like us, someone to make a motion to accept this proposal, and the only contingency I'll put on it is that tomorrow, I plan to spend the day finishing up the other one and getting in touch with this gentleman and our people, just to make sure that we're not redundant in any way, that we're not gonna compete against the two we're doing. We don't want to hurt our chances either, right? So I just want to make sure, and I think if we do it that way, we'll be okay. So contingent upon the go-ahead from our consultant and the DEC. Everybody okay with that? Counsel? Does that sound like a plan? Okay, thanks. All right, so I thought I just did. Make a motion? Somebody make a motion for me?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Call a question?
Aye.
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 Aye, so Carrie, thank you. Sir?
If there's gotta be two motions for this, two resolutions, first one has to be that you are interested in proceeding to apply for the grant?
Which we just did. Yep, and the other one?
The second one would have to be that you're gonna hire Choice Words.
Okay.
I know there's an option part of that, if you have to check, see if you're not duplicating anything, and if you're already in the gateway portal in order to apply for the grant, it would be easy.
Okay. All right, well, for me, I mean, I hear what you're saying, I get it. One piece, what's that?
That was this. Sorry.
Yeah. So, yeah, so what I was, my goal here and the motion on the table was to award this contract to Choice Words, right? At that amount.
That's, that's how I took my motion, that I made a motion that we were going to enter into a relationship with Choice Words, so that they would be able to file the grant application at a rate of $80 per hour for a maximum of 30 hours' worth of work.
Does that sound right?
Yeah, no, that's fine.
Yeah.
And this is coming from them.
Right.
Because we had conference calls.
Sure, sure.
They also would like a resolution stating that you are interested in applying invasive species.
Okay.
Not just hiring them, but also that you're applying for it.
Okay, I just, the only reason, yeah, I got what you're saying, the only thing I thought was, it actually says under the service here, the research, writing, and filing of the DEC invasive species grant. So that's what I'm hiring them for specifically, but you think that they're...
You're hiring them for that, but you also have to say that your town board is interested in applying for that grant. That would really come first, then hiring them would come second.
Mr. Supervisor, is there a requirement, sometimes with these grants, there's a requirement to submit as part of the grant application, a resolution from the village board saying that, is that what you're saying?
Yes, that's right.
Okay, so then I think what they need is a separate written resolution, which I can draft. Well, that I think is done. What they're gonna need probably is to submit a formal written app, a written resolution adopted tonight, authorizing the village to apply for this grant. So you can make a motion, you've already made that motion, it's been accepted. So now you would need a motion to authorize the Village of Monroe to apply for the invasive species grant. And I can get more details and put more details in that resolution, but what'll happen is then that'll be drafted, we'll adopt it tonight, and then the formal resolution, which will go in the minutes, will actually be submitted to Choice Words, and they would... They would include that, when they're on the gateway, they would upload that resolution. It would be part of the application. I think that's what the supervisor, some...
I think so.
Yeah.
Typically, that's how it works.
That's the way it was explained to us.
Got it.
Why we ended up. By coincidence, we did it like that last night, but it was explained to us today, that's how it should have been done.
Okay.
So separate, so you need a motion, as I said, to...
So I will make a motion that we apply for, that we, that we apply for a grant from the DEC for invasive species. And that, well, we've already done that. So I make the motion that we apply for the invasive species grant.
Call a question?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so Carrie.
And Mr. Mayor, if you, if you can give me, is it Steve Densmore?
Yes.
You can give me his email, I will specifically reach...
Yeah.
Wait, I have it.
Yep.
Do I have it?
Okay.
Oh, okay, I see it. I'll reach out to him tomorrow, tell him that the resolution was adopted and make sure there's, if there's anything in the specific form that he needs.
Okay. Terrific. Thank you. Okay. The only thing I had was just to recap what work was done last week with regard to Monbeisha Lake and the work that we've discovered at the DEC. We met with them, we took them up to the site, but first we met here, spoke, had a great conversation, really smart people, and they put us in touch with somebody else, and that person followed up with us, and so the wheels are turning on that. So I'll be sending that out tomorrow in a constant contact and on our website. That's all I had, really, I think. Counsel? Anything? Okay. Call a comment. Sir? Please. If you could just state your name for the record, sir? Thank you.
My name is Frank Eppinger, and I appreciate time. I have just a short dissertation on YMCA.
Yep.
Did a lot of reading, thinking about it, okay, kind of looked back in time. I look at it as kind of a formula that flows back and forth. Access equal to safety, safety, safety equal access. Okay? Right at the top, they mentioned, I didn't like the attitude that you build a building, then you seek approval. Should have got the approval up front. To me, it's unheard, it's a kind of a poor business practice. First of all, I'd like to know when the traffic survey was completed by DOT. The original survey, many years ago, when the original Smith was proposed, was based upon a daytime survey, no traffic by Connecticut, Connecticut firm. At the same time, the people who are engineering the service was actually subsidized by the contractor. So I voiced my objections, it was a conflict of interest, but no one listened. I'm aware I retired from the county, too, so I'm aware of different things. At that time, there was no Smith Farms. Okay? Chedda, which has been in construction, did not exist. You expect a lot of traffic. Because basically, they're based in Goshen, but they have the main site on Seventeen M. Gilbert Street is also used for, it's a throughway from Greenwood Lake all the way down in commuter traffic. Take Greenwood Lake, Lakes Road, shoot it down, you rent the Seventeen. Okay? It's been, it's many years it commuted. It's all the school buses, Shoprite, post office. You can impossible to get a spot anymore in Shoprite or post office. Impossible. You have to book your spot at seven o'clock at night. Okay? Crystal Run has built, but it's expanding. I drove by this morning, eight o'clock in the morning, it was jammed already, the lot. They bring more specialties, mean more people. Okay? Plus the fact, when Legoland opens, the only way to get to Goshen, you take Seventeen M. You cannot go on Seventeen anymore, Legoland opens up. It's all Seventeen M all the way. You expect a lot of traffic coming through. Okay? And plus the fact, you build a commuter lot, it's already filled. So, it means more people are moving up, plus the surrounding areas. So, again, you have a jam, a traffic jam. Okay? Now, here's the thing. You go to Gilbert Street, anytime can be, I thought it was, I thought the road had shut down, there's a lot of time, lines of traffic, you go from Chester all the way through Monroe. Now, the construction around Woodbury, everybody's taking a shortcut through Monroe. Exit Thirty even radio, stay away from Thirty, so you're starting to get towed by Twenty-nine. It's jammed. Okay? You have those situations. Traffic both ways. When it snows, you're not going anyplace. Bad weather, this. How many times you cannot make a left onto, trying to get to, to go to Chester? People are driving through Shoprite, I do it, you can't get out. Okay? You come, it's a community, you're not going all the way to Lakes Road to come back, you're gonna go through Shoprite. And Shoprite has enough problems with traffic. Okay? It's gonna increase more and more. And plus the fact, Monroe is growing, and also around the areas. So, that's even a, a bigger problem. Okay? And plus, you have that situation with traffic. And also, if you read MVAs, they're increasing in the village.
Why?
Traffic. Okay? And people are being less careless, everybody's rushing. Okay? It's, yeah, because the, the uppace of people moving in are becoming more, more hectic, you're driving faster, more traffic accidents. Look at the percentages, you know, the mayor, look at the reports. Okay? Now, we have this situation about, I look at it, the people using Heritage Trail, laundry man in Wally's. Okay? You have traffic coming through, how do you designate the traffic lane? Do we have fences, streets curbing? How do you, how do you keep traffic contained? You're not gonna work with yellow lines and left and right arrows. It's impossible. Just look around. How many people ride the bike lanes? They, they, there are a lot of legal, right? The police are very busy in Monroe. Okay? What happens, you intersect the trail, how do people round, go work around the trail? Has anybody visited the other rounds, workarounds around Goshen, where, my, Middletown? They're like, they're very stringent. There's little, the streets running through it. Okay? They have barriers. You're in a situation, causes just going across the, across the tracks. And how do you protect the people in Wally's? And all, you have people, that whole area wandering around, how do you protect those people? Okay? Now, the other thing is, okay, what about the liability? Is it a private street? What about the maintenance, the liability of the Y? It's not gonna be a driveway, and if the village has it, what's their liability? What's their maintenance? I recommend you put it there, but you get more insurance. Okay? Because that's sue time. Okay? The other thing is, I would say also, turning on Seventeen M, you need a traffic light. It's impossible. Originally, I remember way back in time, when I served on a board, there was talking about that time, the Y wanted to expand, they should put a traffic light in at Gilbert Street and Seventeen M. The state said no, because all these developers I mentioned before were not present. Okay? They weren't present, so you're dealing with back time. Okay? And you, when you think about it, if you talk to DOT, how much priority they set for upstate New York versus closer to the city? Many people think in the city, this is upstate New York, no, we're downstate. So, the concept of where we're going has changed. Plus, how many people have moved in the last eight, nine years? Okay? And surrounding areas. And I really think that, if you, say you don't have a traffic light, you don't see a traffic light, how do you pull a left and right out? Okay? If there's traffic. Because how many people block the street entrances? I know there's a law, you cannot block an exit from the street, how many people do it? Or you drive through the banks to get out. So, I really think it's generally a major concern, this whole environment. My other concern is why they do it. I mean, I kind of summed it up, why did the Y consider expansion or relocating without a complete agreement for two means of access? Poor business, or is it hold-up time? And I would say the final thing is, based on my statistical background, how many village residents are using Y as percentage of total membership? I can't conceive seven thousand members that coming from, from, from Monroe, the village, you know, joining the Y, inconceivably. So, I really think that we have to consider the total scope of the village. Okay? I don't care whether they stay or leave, that's a business decision. Okay? If they do it here, a lot of villages will not accept them. They're going down the road the second time. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eppinger.
Next? Anybody? John, please?
Good evening, Mr. Carl. I'm well, and you?
I have a few things just to touch base on. First, snow removal in the village, this last storm was not the best in the downtown area here. Snow piles, which froze, were never cleaned up. You got snow heaped up around parking meters. Obviously, there's a problem. I know there's been a change of leadership, but I really think you need to address this downtown area when it snows. If we can send guys out on the pond on a weekend to clean the snow off, we should be able to clean our downtown area. Because all you need is somebody to try to put a quarter in one of those meters and slip on the ice, and it's gonna be an issue. Road salt. Do you know where you stand between this time, last year, and now, is how much tonnage of salt that you've used?
I don't know.
And the reason why I say that, um, just the subdivision that I live in, there's still salt on a road that hasn't even dissolved. That last snowstorm, they salted my road six times. Well, it's a village road. Six times it was salted. Take a ride down to Wingate Woods and look at the salt in the cul-de-sacs. Look at, it's not even dissolved. The cars are now mashing it down to the, it's powder. So, when a car comes speeding through, or a quality school bus, you can taste salt in the air. You gotta look at what you're doing. You're oversalt in your roads. You wanna talk about the environment, that stuff all winds up in the catch basins, winds up in the streams. I notice it. I used to do it for a living, so, as you well know, but it's, uh, you're oversalt in your roads. Uh, let's see. I'll get on to YMCA in a minute. Um, I did notice, um, the flyer that came with the water bills regarding snow removal of the sidewalks and all that, which, hey, I'm all for it. You've heard me here complain in the past. That's great. Number one, is it being enforced? And number two, if we're sending that out to the public, telling them, telling them they need to clean their walkways, put salt or ash or whatnot down on the sidewalks, shouldn't the village be doing the same thing with the trail around the ponds? That was all froze over. So, if we're telling the public to do it, lead by example. The sicko station up on the other side of town, the old Bruce's, Bruce's Golf. Anybody drive that at all?
Yeah, that's, I go to work every morning past it.
How about coming home at night, when the kamikaze pilots come out of that sicko station, shoot across the two oh eight off-ramp, and come through the mobile parking lot, and just about put their bumper up to the side of your car to get out in front of you? That's a problem. It's the same one, when they come down, sometimes you're stuck in traffic, you can't move. They'll come off of Forest Avenue, they come down, they cut across, they shoot in there, they loop around, they come back out, and, and they, and it's, it's... Have you experienced it? I sent you a picture the other day of it.
Well, it's that, what is it, Mobile too?
Whatever, is it-
That whole area, yeah, it was-
They cut across the Mobile, but they come from the other gas station, and they shoot across, but it's just a matter of time before there's gonna be an accident there. I know there's already been a couple, but nothing major, but it's gonna happen. That needs to be addressed. And while we're talking about that, um, as I'm sitting in traffic there, watching somebody try to push my side door in to get out in front of me, that print shop next to the firehouse, what in God's creations going on there? Have you seen the amount of vehicles in there? You can't get a bicycle up in there during the daytime, yet alone a fire truck. It's many vans all the way down that driveway, and you can't get in there. Somebody needs to take a look at that.
Just a question, uh, regarding the print shop. So, the print shop, um, has parking spots?
I don't know what their site plan-
That's what I, that's-
There are parks, but they, they're all the way down to the road.
Right.
And they've been, they've been parking in the firehouse parking lot, and they've been chased out of there.
Right. So, all I'm gonna, John, is I'm gonna look at the site plan, but I believe that the drive, to the right of the drive, I believe, is marked spots.
They're parking on both sides.
I'm with you.
Yeah.
And, and, and we'll... Got it.
The last thing, let's talk about the Y a little bit. I mean, I, I read some stuff in the, in the paper, and I know you don't, you know, don't believe everything you read in the paper, but, um, you know... I read some statements that you made, that this board is dead against that, pretty much?
That was taken at-
The way I interpreted it is this board is, is, is dead, dead, dead against it. Was that, is that a fair statement to say, that that was?
It's not a fair statement to say. The board is doing its diligence right now, and what I said on the fifteenth of January in public session was that we're gonna do our work to see how things got to be where they got to. Because this board is being asked to allow a use that we don't have any prior knowledge of. So, there was DOT information, there was county information, there were minutes, there was all kinds of planning board stuff, and we're going through it. I think you're referring to Times Hall Record?
Yeah, I remember that article.
So, uh, I had a pretty, pretty comprehensive conversation with him. I didn't call him to correct it or, or to ask for a retraction or anything, because I'm, that's not what I'm about, I mean, you know.
Are you, I mean, I'm, I'm sure you read the article also, right?
Yeah, sure, yeah.
So, I mean, I've-
So, you know, we're gonna do-
I've got these meetings, I don't remember hearing all of this.
No, neither do I. So, uh-
Again, it's the paper, so I'm bringing it to your attention, that's all.
Right. I'm, I'm just telling you, yeah. So, what, what I said to Chris was that this board has a responsibility to the residents of this community to do its homework. And we're gonna do it. You know, we're not in favor of it, but we have to understand, how did we get to this point? Our concerns are based upon somebody saying, we want to do this. So, I asked Mr. Bedansky and Mr. Ollie, the engineer, if I could take their drawings and their data and bring them back to this board, which I did back in June. And at that time, we were told, we, the board told them that we were not interested in that, we think there's a lot of concerns about that, we're not in favor of it. So, I asked then to bring the town into this picture by asking them to look at maybe another opportunity. And Mr. Bedansky said, that's what he wanted all along, but the former supervisor, back in the day, did not want that. And that's how he got back to coming to the village. So, they went through whatever process they did from, I guess, when they first came into the village in oh nine and opened in eleven, and then there was planning board things, and, uh, you know, expansion conversations and all kinds of stuff from what they're telling me and what I'm reading. So, this board is just doing its homework, but there's tremendous reservation, and we made four points about what our reservations were. Bypassing traffic, crossing the trail, ingressing and egressing, and to what Mr. Eppinger had spoken about, you know, on that stretch from the traffic light down to the location where there will be a traffic light on Gilbert, I asked if I was, and I didn't measure it, but I, I'm, I'm taking a guess and saying between seven hundred and fifty and a thousand linear feet. Right. And in that space, I've got nine driveway cuts. And to Mr. Eppinger's point, there is no courtesy. And I said, I can't make a left onto Seventeen M. I use the gas station there, and I use Freeman's, and I can't. I gotta make a right, go into Crystal Run, and come back. It's the only way I can get back onto that lane of traffic to come back in the village. So, that was a concern. Plus, there's a number of businesses, twelve businesses that come in and out of there, including Crystal Run at the very top before that light. So, how that got to be where, if we were dead, if we were dead set against it, there'd be no work here, no homework, there'd be no diligence, the minutes would reflect that. And they don't.
Well, I can, I can tell you, a lot of that started back when Y first approached me in two thousand and nine, to come into the village. And, um, you know, I was all for it. I met with Ed Diana regarding the Heritage Trail, who was a county executive at the time, and that they were going to look into it. Things were progressing, and then, of course, two thousand and ten came, and I, I went, and, um, things, you know, whatever happened with the communication to your board, it's, it's up, you know, there's a few of it, and it's been sitting here for a while, so it's not like it's, it was sprung up on you. But I will say, um, by putting that traffic light in, putting a turning lane, a left turning lane into Gilbert Street, which can be done, because there's quite a bit of state right-of-way down through there, if you're looking at the plans, you'll, you'll see all of that, to put the left turning lane into Gilbert Street, put that traffic light in there, that's gonna act as a, as a calming device as well. So, you're not gonna have cars shooting around and running the shoulder, because somebody's trying to make the left on the Gilbert Street, and there's no turning lane. You do that right, and put the four-way traffic light in, and connect Gilbert Street Extension. Because if that, if, for some reason that doesn't happen, rest assured, that curb cut that's in there for that paper road now, when that traffic light gets put in, and it's only a three-way traffic light, that's gonna get curb cut, that's gonna be, there's gonna be a curb put in there. Because they're not gonna let anybody come out of that, out of Wally's, out of that little parking area, out against the traffic light, it's just not gonna happen. So, I think everybody needs to sit down and really look at it as a whole. Coming out through the town, and that was discussed, and I know I've had a conversation with the town supervisor a while back, and it's still a, a mess, is the worst place, and I ride that Heritage Trail a lot, I walk it a lot, that whole trail, the worst place, the worst intersection, is where that commuter parking lot road comes down onto Orange and Rockland Road. It's a mess. You've got cars haphazardly parking up on the lawns, and you can't see, when you're riding a bike, you can't see what, you almost, and there's no crosswalk there. And I don't even know if that road's got a name. It's, it was just, you know, but that, there's a serious problem down there too. You've got cars sticking out Orange and Rockland Road, out over the white line. You've got sight distance problems there. So, if you're gonna try to do something else, and, and, and the fire apparatus and emergency vehicles gotta come around and come down that way, they're gonna be dealing with that. That's an issue. You're not gonna want to come the other way, because we just talked about all the traffic and the kamikaze pilots coming out of the sicko station. So, we gotta do something. I don't want to see the Y leave Monroe. But it, things can happen. You've got a developer who is responsible for that traffic light. Let's make it a four-way traffic light, because if it's only a three-way traffic light, everybody's gonna lose out, because that, they're not gonna, that curb's going back in there, across that paper road.
Yeah. My concerns-
Turning lanes, we've talked in the past, you've heard me here, we got the same problem on Freeland Street. The village went and took those roads over. They should have done a traffic study before they did that. The county was glad to get rid of them, because that's, that's a headache off their back. Now, you got the headache. You got the same thing. You need turning lanes on the Forshee Street, you need them on the Calvin Terrace. Traffic gets backed up, you can't move.
You know, John, it, it's interesting, uh, you're absolutely correct, and it's, it's, it's the main crux behind my, I won't speak for these folks, from my concerns, okay? What we tend to do in planning personally, it's my personal opinion, we tend to say, that's my concern, that's my problem, I'm gonna fix my problem. I don't care about yours, and I don't care about yours or yours. I care about mine. I gotta take care of me. When I do that, if I got something left over, I'll help you. If I don't, sorry. The problem with that is- The problem with that is Forshee, is this street, is the turning lane, is the traffic light, is the coordination. We don't think in the macro, we think in the, in the minute, we're, we're down to molecules, the way we do our business here, and we're not alone, a lot of villages, a lot of towns probably do the same bloody thing. Applicant comes in, he's coming in for his property and his work. He's not interested in what's going down the block. So who's, who's gotta be that, that gatekeeper? Us. We've gotta say, hey, listen, that one-lane two oh eight state highway has been around probably since forever, at least the forties, I would imagine, up from Brucey's to coming down, okay?
Yeah, at one time, I remember when that was two lanes there.
Well, I kinda do too, but somebody's been refuting me, so.
There was a fatal accident there and that's when somebody went through the old Bucky's building and that.
That's where I remember, so anyway, but imagine now, two oh eight going north actually has a left turn. State highway has a left turn. I never heard of such a thing, you? I mean, I, I, I mean, they had it in Washoe, well, in other words, you come up two oh eight, when you get to Scotty Monk, you make a left turn, that you can't make, the road is so bloody narrow. The stop bar is so close to the intersection, people, cars are backing up, but they can't back up, because the guy that's trying to get out and play chicken onto two oh eight from the mobile station, he can't get there, because he doesn't know who's coming his way, so he's inching out, looking, trying to get out, and can't, because he's stuck, because that guy decided, to Mr. Eppinger's point again, decided to encroach onto the, the clearing. It, it's just mind-boggling, and that's just, that's a behavior. I can't do anything about that, but what we can do is.
Way to clean that up, make that thing, but you'd have to take property under eminent domain, the state would.
Well, after Bucky's left, after Bucky's left, it never should've happened.
Cars have to flow around that rotary, and then they can get off where they need to get off.
Right, when Bucky's left, and that could still happen, it takes good minds, I've already reached out to Senator Scoofus, I've reached out to our assemblyman, don't have a lot of hope there, but Senator Scoofus, I'm hoping for more so. And I'm hoping for some help, this board is looking for some guidance. We, we've reached out to different people, we're trying to get certain things looked at, we, there's a, there's a development that's in the, in the queue right now, where it is, I don't know, logistically, but there's a guy that bought in, bought Joe's Fix-Its and the vacant lots. He's coming in with what looks like from the rendering, a really beautiful office slash retail location. He is not gonna get permission to come out on a one-way street, I don't know how he would entrance that. So he's gonna have to think in a much bigger picture, and the engineer was from Massachusetts. So I said, listen, why not tag team, let's try to look at something a little more comprehensively, let's look at the big picture, maybe consider either a rotary and/or a stoplight environment there at the lowest part of that street with turning lanes, to your point, where you can come in and out with left-hand turning lanes through traffic up to two oh eight, should you not decide this, I think the answer is two oh eight, two-way, get rid of that one-way business, it doesn't work anymore. Take what you need, make the lane changes, make the width changes, make it right. Make Scotty Monk, North Main, or Rico, make them secondary, don't even make them come out, let them do whatever they want there. We shouldn't be not be sending tractor trailers up on two oh eight, can't make a left turn to continue on that track, onto the quickway, it's ridiculous, it's archaic. But yet we do, and I don't know why, but this board has committed to not letting that happen again, so Mr. Bedansky, Mr. Ollie, Mr. Preston were all here, Mr. Misselli was here, and I asked for the opportunity to allow us to do this homework and see what resolutions we could come to, thinking in the macro, I'm thinking in the much bigger picture. So that when I'm well gone, the work that this board has done is going to reflect good planning, not taking care of just this issue just for today. Because to Mr. Eppinger's point, and I happen to agree with it to some degree, uh, nobody has courtesy, I've never seen anything like it, where everybody blocks, when I taught my son to drive, I said, never block an intersection, never block somebody's driveway. Well, but this is what I see, so here you are trying to make a left now, how many times have you seen people coming down two oh eight, making a left onto seventeen M to come into the village? And they're trying to beat the light, now the front end of them is on seventeen M heading to the village, the back end of them is heading toward Chester. Now that impinges this group heading toward Chester from continuing on their path. Now everybody's aggravated, now they're ramped up a bit, now they're gonna start doing stupid things, before you know it, we got, we got wacky races. We got a situation, I don't know if you know this, but when you come into the village, you go past the traffic light, you make the left onto Mill Pond Parkway. Currently, in its current form, hash marked out by the New York State Department of Transportation, it's an illegal left-hand turn. Nobody observes that. Now, the problem with that is, when they're sitting there making that left, whether it's gonna become legal or illegal currently. When they're sitting there, what are everybody else doing? They're going around them, onto the shoulder, now they're impinging the people egressing from Empire and seven ninety-one seventeen M. I mean, when does it change? I mean, at some point, fifty-nine in Rockland County, and now you walk up and say, you know what, we gotta get out of the dark ages, we're in the dark ages. We've got holes full of potholes, it's a mess, nothing works, it's all failing, we, we've, we've got a hole up there on seventeen M coming into our park that we actually have put shopping carts in it to stop cars from going in it. We've had it filled twice.
How about that big hump by the diner?
Same thing. Site clearance, there was a gentleman came here on the fifteenth of January, spoke about that very thing. He said he's had to slam on his brakes several times as he comes over to the site, site clearance is terrible.
Well, say, I just want it, cause the developer that has to put that traffic light.
Has to happen, you're absolutely right.
Has to happen.
Yep.
I wanna make sure that that thing is set up, so it's not a three-way, and then somewhere, somehow, things get changed, and then it's gonna be somebody else's burden to put the, you know, to put the, the, the fourth light facing back Gilbert Street Extension. Should be put in as a four-way, and then like you do your, you do your work. But, um, I, as far as crossing the trail and, and the danger there, it's, it's, you're talking two hundred feet of road, give or take. I mean, people aren't gonna be, you know, they're not gonna be going fast with two hundred feet of road.
Yeah, I, yeah, I can't, I can't.
Like I say, and if, if the state, if they decide to put that light in and not use Gilbert Street, that, that little piece of parking lot's gonna go away, cause that's, uh.
And it should go away, you know, somebody had suggested that that might've been part of the reasoning behind, uh, not allowing it, put the curb in. That's not my issue, my, my issue is what I stated, you know, sure, is that an ancillary thing where, you know, kids are running out, looking to get ice cream, running around that thing there, I don't know how you control those kids. Maybe there is a mechanism in there, maybe there's some fencing, so that was never, this board's, never even wait, never even came up in conversation. It was about crossing the trail, it's about bypassing through that parking lot, I've come into that parking lot, on several times, I came up there on Halloween. And people are coming out the front doors of those Ys, little kids, adults and whatnot, there is no really like sidewalk, curb, drop, street. It's just one path right out. Now, I don't know, kid opens the door, come on, mom, let's go, and he's heading out, meanwhile, Timmy's gotta get to Chase Bank and he's coming around that turn, he's not thinking of the kid.
But wasn't that approved by the planning board?
Yes, it was.
Did the engineers check off on everything that was supposed to have been done?
I'm told they did.
I don't know, I mean.
Well, let me tell you this, at the time, when they approved it, there was no, there was no potential for a cut-through, as there potentially would be now, to my point of view. At the time, the parking lot ended there, so anybody coming in would've come in, came into the Y. Would they have passed that door? Yes, to get to a parking spot, yes. But I'm talking about the person who has a different mindset, I'm talking with a guy, like you say, with, with the zombie cars and everything up on the sicko. He's not happy, he wants to get to Chase, he wants to get to Burger King, he wants to get home. And he's coming through and he knows he's gonna have to sit for six or seven cycles, you know that, to get up to the two oh eight seventeen M light. So now he knows that he could do it through the Y in the same fashion. He's gonna do it, I've done it. Everybody does it. So I'm just looking at that type of mindset and saying, okay, that enters into my equation. Listen, Mr. Bedansky not only said that night, but he followed up with an email the next day, thank you for the opportunity to present, thank you for your diligence, and thank you for your continued support. We hope we come to, and I told him that, and, and now we're trying to schedule an appointment to meet one-on-one to continue the conversation.
I appreciate your time, sorry it took so long.
No, no, I just, I'm just as passionate as I think the Y is about their point of view. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Good evening, how you guys doing today?
Good, good, thanks.
Good, how are you?
Not gonna take up too much of your time, we addressed some of the issues that I was gonna, gonna ask, um, I'm just here tonight to acknowledge that, um, you know, everyone on this board has received, uh, the letter from Mr. Preston and you guys have all gotten a formal request. And I, yes?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, and I am happy to hear you say that that newspaper, kind of reading through the lines a little bit, but that wasn't your stand, so that makes me.
Well, I mean.
On behalf of the board.
You were here, right?
Yes.
Was that stated that night?
No, and you know what, members asked me, and I said, I don't take that for what it's worth. And I know we've been doing this all for a long time, things get messed up, and they get misconstrued. And I didn't believe in my heart that actually you did make that statement, so I'm happy to hear you tonight, kind of taking that back on behalf of the board, that was definitely deserved.
Well, I never gave it out, so I can't take it back.
Thank you.
Alright, so.
Uh, you know, I just, I just wanna express, you know, some of these, we, we've had concerns still in the past, and we feel we can meet these safety requirements. All I'm, I'm here to, is to ask you guys, take the time, give us a chance, come into our Y, we can get our traffic consultant there. Um, Mr. Dwyer, you know, you just made a comment about the, the, the way the road is, it's, there's a sidewalk in those planes, are you aware of that?
Which, where is the sidewalk?
So where the Gilbert Street is.
Yep.
There's gonna be a sidewalk with beautiful crosswalk, I look at this as an improvement to that eyesore area.
Yeah, I, I don't, yeah, I do know where, uh, that wasn't my sidewalk story, my sidewalk, sidewalk point of view is, so you're walking on a, on a sidewalk, and you're gonna cross the street, you're gonna drop six inches onto a pavement, and then you're gonna continue. Is it, that's what I was trying to say, so my concern was when you're exiting out of the building. And listen, I, I don't know why I think like that, it's just my nature. Okay, so I'm thinking about your kids, you, everybody, right?
Me too, and I just wanted to stress to you guys that the Y is going to go above and beyond on safety measures. You know, just give us that opportunity, we, we, we have a conference going on right now, an open forum, we're educating our members, cause you know what, it is, it's a lot to retain. If you're not a traffic consultant, or, you know, do this for a living, it's a lot. You know, so I just, we need that time, and, and we do look forward to meeting with you, and we're all smart enough people, we can work through this.
So the only thing I ask of you is, uh, you're, you're having a forum, and had we not had a meeting tonight, I would've attended that forum, if you'd like, sorry. Uh, but when you get back there, I need you to do me a favor, it's very important, so one of our trustees, uh, had met with somebody here who has a lot of say in this community and is very well-respected, okay, I won't go into the details, but just take it for what I say.
Yep.
And the first statement that was said was, why doesn't the mayor want us to have a pool?
Yeah.
Now, I've spoken about this, I don't wanna start rehashing all garbage. But it really, it's also the model kinda like that comes from across the road there too a bit, you know, I mean, I'll say on camera and, and I think, and I haven't changed the story since I met you, so it's easy to come out that way every time, one end to the other. But this story from the Y, however it comes out, however, I, I understand my face is up there like a wanted poster with the article. Well, that's what I heard, alright, okay, but it's there, so here's.
Just educate, just educate.
Right.
The people deserve to know what's happening, and that's all we're trying to do.
So what I would do, right, so what I would do and recommend or ask for you, cause I shouldn't write my own story, you folks should write it, and you should say that the board and the mayor are committed to trying to find a solution, which is what I said. Uh, and I've said repeatedly to you, Mr. Bedansky, Mr. Preston.
Yeah, I've said that.
Alright, and, and that's it, and when somebody says anything other than that, you beg them to stop. Because it was even a conversation that came out after the fifteenth on the sixteenth about, you know who's gonna buy that place, should you not stay here? Listen, when you guys got caught wind of that, I know in my house, if I hear that nonsense, it's gonna be an issue. I don't wanna hear that, cause that's just, again, that's, that's addressing fear, that's addressing divisiveness, and that's not what this is about, this, this board is absolutely, if I'm speaking out of trust, I'm speaking too much, go ahead.
No, you know what, I, I would like to speak only because I did read in the paper, and it, it really, I felt like it made us sound like these mean people that don't have a heart. Um, you know, we're all parents, I have four children, I was a member of the Y, um, actually when you first opened, I did go to, my daughter went to beat the streets, we did the drop and dine.
I remember.
I'm sure you guys would know my boys, cause they're all over the place, we've been to birthday parties. Um, but sometimes things get approved, the town, the village, different places in the county, and all we hear about, like, everybody is, oh my gosh, how did that get approved, how did that gas station get approved, it is so crazy to pull out of there, we hear it all the time, and once something's done, it really can't be taken back. And, you know, I did, you know, yeah, I would like to go back into the Y, but I did drive through a couple days before the meeting and I was looking around, and for me, it just seems, maybe I need to walk a little more, it, to me, it just seemed to make more sense to go out the other way by O and R. I don't know, there's just different, you know, we do have to get together, we have to talk about it. We want everybody to be safe, I have kids that.
As do we.
Yeah, I mean, my kids, even now, they, they run, they, you know, go where they need to go, but, um, we have to really take this seriously, we can't just say, yeah, let's do this or let's not do it. But I, I did feel like we were made out to be kind of like the bad guy, and we don't wanna do that, but we have to, you know, think about everything. And what's, you know, we're, we're not finished, obviously, we're gonna meet with you guys, and I did get an invitation for something coming up on the twenty-first that I can't make it to, but, um, I would like to come in.
Sorry, no meeting, you're all welcome to come, it's gonna be held at, at Liberty Street, look for you guys to come and be part of it.
Good.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Um, well, with that, I know you guys got some homework to do, and, uh, we, we encourage you guys to come in, we're here to help through that process, anything we can do. Just one other thing, I just gotta say, I, I was supposed to get this up too, it kinda came up. There are, with this amendment cycle, there are some, a lot of traffic deterrents, we'll call them.
Right.
That will slow this up, so going through that traffic lot, going through that parking lot now, I don't feel is a fair statement without really taking into consideration and seeing the number of speed bumps, which are raised crosswalks, actually, they're not speed bumps, I just learned this tonight too.
Sure.
So, you know, there is a lot of deterrent in there to stop that, and there's other, you know, there's a lot of other things that we are taking into consideration. So I welcome you guys to come into the Y, be part of this community, and I hope you'll take me up on that sooner than later.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, guys.
Anyone else? Mr. McGinn, please, come on up.
Mayor, trustees, thank you for giving me this opportunity to address you, Mike McGinn, High Ridge Road. Um, I'm here to speak on behalf of the Y and their, their plans as, as stated. Disclaimer alert, or, or full disclosure alert, I am a member of the Y, although it's hard to tell from, and I should be going there more frequently. Uh, agreed, that's right, thank you, Mr. Supervisor. And, uh, in the past, I had two sons that worked there, up at Camp Discovery, when they were back in college, they're no longer there. Uh, and I had a daughter that used to work there that, uh, is no longer there, about two years, or a year and a half. So just disclaimer, alright? Um, in my time on the board in Monroe, I've learned one thing, and my, the thing I've learned is to listen to our professionals, whether it be attorneys, engineers. Do your due diligence, and you look at what, what, what they're saying, but then you look at what their, what their position is. And that's what you hang your hat on at the end of the day, alright? I, I can, your, the concerns that you have and, and the fact that you're doing the due diligence to make sure that those concerns are addressed are, is great, and that's, that you're doing your job as a board. But I just wanna kind of, uh, address them, those, those four concerns. Uh, first and foremost, uh, crossing the Heritage Trail, I testified at the county, when, uh, before the county legislature, when they gave that approval. It was before I was even on the board, it was before I was running for anything, it wasn't, I did it, cause they asked me to do it, to go up there from a law enforcement perspective and speak about the importance of the Y and the community. I did, I got up there, I said, listen, it takes kids off the street, beat the streets, all the other things, it gives them something else to do in this day and age with the opiate, uh, opiate, uh, academ, uh.
Epidemic.
Thank you. Um, the, you know, things like that, anything that gets kids off the streets is a great thing, alright? Uh, that was what I pitched to the, uh, the legislature, obviously, they did their due diligence, they listened to their professionals, and they determined that the crossing the trail there would, would not be a problem. I don't know how many crosses there are on the trail between Harriman and now going all the way up to Middletown, but there's numerous. And, and I think eighteen? Alright, so there's, there's, uh, and all those crossings, there's adequate safety measures put into place to protect people, whether they are biking, running, or whatever, so I, I mean, I think those, those concerns are, are addressed. Um, regarding the traffic on seventeen M, uh, seventeen M is a commercial roadway, and it's, 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 it is meant to, has commercial properties on it. Uh, there are no, there, there's no problems here that can't be mitigated with, with traffic control devices, uh, signage, and, and, uh, other traffic, uh, remediation efforts, alright? The, the, uh, fact that there's been accidents over the years, well, there's, there's been accidents all along seventeen M and every other state highway. And, and, uh, listen, that's, that's where you do enforcement, you've got a police department that's out there, I see state police, they're out there, uh, you know, they're, they're doing their jobs, and, and that's how you, uh, get people to comply with the traffic laws, so I don't think the, the traffic concerns on seventeen M and curb cuts and all that is, is something, something you take into consideration, but I think, you know, we were talking about motorists and their behavior, I mean, listen. you know, we were talking about motorists and their behavior, I mean, listen, there's thousands of people that drive on the road, probably ninety percent of them are out there driving, right, and the ten percent that are are knuckleheads, and it makes it seem like it's the other way around. But you can't take motorists' behavior and say that's the reason why you're not gonna approve a project or something, you know? The, and actually, John Carl brought up a good point, that turn lane, and that would probably make a lot of sense coming off the extension of the two oh eight here. Listen, I don't know how the, you know, I don't know the history, how it wound up there. It's not a great location, I go there, I make that left turn going across to go into the Y. Obviously, having another access point would be fantastic, and I think that's something that needs to be done, whether there's an expansion or not. So, you know, I just, I just put out to you, you know, don't get down in the weeds. You know, look at what's being presented to you, look at the facts. Try not to bring in all this other ancillary things, you know, what happened in the past. The fact is, the Y is there, it's at that location. To say, maybe it didn't belong there, I mean, we come up with things all the time in the town, they're like, how the hell did this happen? But you know what, they're there, and we have to deal with it, and we can't shut them down, and we can't say move or go do something else, so we gotta work with it, you know? You know, and to your defense, you know, listen, two thousand nine, they should've started working on it back when they started there. That's when they should've started working on the curb cut, going across the trail, doing all that, because, again, that option coming in off of two oh eight or the extension right there was not viable then, it's not viable now. They should've been on it, there should've been better planning on their part, maybe more input from the previous village boards. And so it's something that the Y should take into consideration when they're kinda putting this on all of you. You know, the other thing I'd say to the Y is, the town has offered viable alternatives, short-term and permanent. If things shouldn't work out in the village, you can still come to us, we have the intention. But again, I think they were kind of, those alternatives were kinda dismissed out of hand, and I think they should've probably been looked at a little stronger. Listen, I don't, you know, I think people shouldn't dig in their heels, they should roll up their sleeves and find a way to get this done. To find a way to get to yes.
Like the board is doing.
Yep, and that's being addressed to both sides here. That's, I'm not, that's what I'm saying, this is, it's a two-way street, you know, it takes two to tangle, as they say. So that's, we gotta figure out a way to get to yes. And whether we all sit down, or however that gets done, but, you know, it can't be played out in the papers, the court of public opinion, and social media, and all this other crazy stuff. All right, it gets done, you know, here.
And you're absolutely right about that. I mean, we are very appreciative of all of the services that the YMCA provides to the Village of Monroe. And you're absolutely right that the current access point is one that makes all of us scratch our heads. How is it possible that cars can go counter-flow on two oh eight in order to access Gilbert Street Extension? That should've never have been approved, and that's exactly what we're trying to avoid. We're trying to avoid allowing, and I'm not saying that this is a no. All I'm saying is that we are taking a look at every possible option, so that the decision that this board makes makes sense for ten years from now. So that later on, when people are going into the Y in ten, fifteen years, still celebrating the fact that they're still a part of the Village of Monroe, that this is an entrance point that nobody worries about. So, and that's exactly what we're doing, where we're taking a look at all of the information, we're taking a look at all of the studies, we're doing some studying of our own, and we just wanna come up with the best possible solution. And just like what you said, there is a solution there, and it's just going to be a matter of everyone talking and having a conversation. And once we learn how to say quasqu centennial.
Well, I couldn't say expedite before, so whatever I was saying before. But listen, thank you for your attention, I'm gonna keep it to the three-minute rule that we have in the town and try to not extend this beyond. I know there's other people that wanna speak. But thank you very much, thank you for considering this.
Thank you, Mr. McGinn.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Please, sir.
Kell Conklin, I'm a village resident, and I also work for Parks Department in New York City, resident. And I just wanted to touch upon a comment that you said earlier, the rotaries. I think that's a really, really good, not only just a solution across the town, but something that could better the town. We've had a lot of comments about traffic tonight, four different comments from different constituents. And we have up here a very good tangible, and you can see that the entire village and town was brought up with the idea of a locus of mess. You know, I'm a little bit biased, Frederick Holmes said, you know, he was also from Harvard. He came up with the idea of a place of safety and comfort. And so if you have a rotary, you can create a green space, the money that you would've normally spent on traffic, like hundreds of thousands of dollars, the constant repair, the maintenance of, is not being wasted anymore. You can put park benches into a traffic circle, you can have a green street, and it'll allow more commerce for the town and the village. Where people will travel into the Y, to, you know, local shop, right, to the markets. We have a lot of people who don't necessarily have money, but are coming into this town and village, that are walking on Saturdays and Sundays. We need green spaces, we need places of comfort and safety, that's the original vision kind of was.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conklin.
Anyone else, please? Please?
Good evening, Ms.
I just moved into the community. Two, several things I wanna let you know. First of all, I got informed yesterday that New York State is having a phone call with NHL tomorrow, so they can finish up the review to possibly nominate the house as a landmark in Monroe. So wanna let you know that that's happening, and that's happening with state support, the state is intervening to make that happen if they can. I just found out it yesterday. Second thing I wanna let you know, that I just got noticed that somebody here in the community has, or is in the process of nominating Rest Haven, they call it the two thousand nineteen Excellence in Home Historic Preservation Award of New York. And the property is being nominated also for that. And hopefully in a couple months, we will know on both where we're going with that, assuming no government shutdown. Now, for my third.
Assuming what, I'm sorry?
Huh?
What'd you say?
Assuming no government shutdown, on the federal level, that is.
The federal level, camera?
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Tony, I'm glad you're here tonight, Mr. Supervisor, Mr. Mayor. I wanna announce something that was disclosed today. I have been buying a property in Monroe. We've gotten control of about twenty acres of land, and the land will be used to develop strictly senior housing for Monroe. It's a three- to five-year plan, and it's a three-phase site, and we're figuring about three hundred units, depending on how we work out with the zoning and everything. So I wanted to let you know, and some of it is on Main Street here. It was noticed today that we are buying Charlie Lang's property. And we're looking to make that continue senior housing rate next, with the one next door. And I think you're gonna find it very nice to lay out, we're gonna have, we're gonna, you know, keep people in our community finally, because I think that's important. I think Mr. Supervisor would agree with me. So I wanted to let you all know that news, we're buying up the land, and the next thirty-eight, the first one will close, and I'm gonna do it in phases. First one, I'd like to put about, you know, whatever we can on that unit, and then build it up and see how the market goes. So we don't saturate it, and we keep our seniors here, because that's the big problem, is that I'm hearing from a lot of people who have talked to me, that the senior. And I do have the state and federal government also looking at assisting with the project as well, with the entire project. So I wanted to let you know, Mr. Mayor, tonight, and Mr. Conroy, and I'm glad you were here tonight for the matter, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Metz.
Anyone else in the public like to speak? Okay, having declined that, I make a motion that we enter executive session for the purposes of current litigation and personnel.
I'll second.
Call a question?
Aye.
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 Aye, so Carrie, thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.